Call meeting in order. Oh, please rise. And I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Violet?
Here.
Alderman Begley?
Here.
Alderman Bassow?
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Here.
Alderman Key?
Here.
Alderman McGrogan?
Here.
Alderman McGovern?
Here.
Alderman Clifford?
Present.
All right, we have a special presentation tonight that Alderman Lewandowski is going to handle with Road's Licensed Permit and Franchises.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Last year, we, the Licensed Permit and Franchise Committee had a special visitor, Ms. DeVries from the Palis Heights Women's Club, and she suggested involving our youth in our, in our schools here in town to have a contest for our vehicle stickers. The Women's Club had done this previously. It kind of fell off, and this was a wonderful idea to engage the youth in the, in the government process. So, we did that with the assistance of the Women's Club and Ms. Astrid Paula. We solicited the, I forgot what age the students were, the grades, but
Third, fourth, and fifth?
Third, fourth, and fifth grade students. Thank you. I know there's multiple. Third, fourth, and fifth grade students around Palis Heights to send in their submissions for the 2024 to 2025 vehicle sticker. We had numerous wonderful submissions, very creative artistic minds here in Palis Heights, and eventually we had to have one winner, and that winner was Ms. Violet Sugg, who's here with us this evening. So, first, we'd like to congratulate Ms. Violet Sugg for winning the vehicle sticker contest for 2024 and 2025. And if you'd be so kind to step up, we have a presentation of a certificate of achievement and some goodies for her. And, Mr. Reeves, if you could step up representing the Palis Heights Women's Club.
I'm just gonna have you show them. Show the picture she drew.
Yeah, so maybe, I'm not the artist, so maybe if someone can help me out, maybe if you could. Well, here's your certificate. Congratulations. Well done, very well done. And maybe, and maybe if we have, maybe have her hold up the art. Yeah, so why don't you hold up the art? I'll hold this for you.
And I'll take your picture off the board.
And then, yeah, then maybe we'll just do a picture of God or two for you of the certificate. And you hold the certificate and I'll hold the art here.
Can you get in there, too?
Yes.
Oh, me?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay.
Congratulations again.
Violet, 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 can we see it really?
Good job.
Did, can we see it? Can we see the picture that you painted?
Here, show it to him.
Put that noise.
How was, what inspired you? Like, what is that school? Is that Lake Catherine?
Uh, yeah, and I've been there a couple times.
Yeah.
And I got the inspiration from the cardinal because my school mascot is a cardinal and our state bird is a cardinal. And usually, I see them sometimes at Lake Catherine, so I thought I'd give it to them. I read the rules last time when I was only using four colors, so I forgot, but I just turned it in.
We won't tell anybody. That's all right.
She goes to Palis East.
That's mine, that's mine. I'll modder.
Right, great number of Palis East.
Yes.
Congratulations.
We did lots of pictures, so we narrowed her down to ten, so we picked ten, and then they picked one out of the ten. So, it was, it was very difficult to choose that lot of so hopefully we can do this again next year.
Great. Well, thank you for Women's Club and
Yeah.
Violet, thank you so much for all your efforts. It's, it's really good. Great accomplishment. So, thank you. All right, we ran along the consent calendar. We've got the approval of the minutes of a city council meeting from March 19th, 2024, the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending March 28th, 2024. Need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move.
Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aight.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Here.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Tonight, we also have the opening bids for the 19, oh, sorry, 19, 2024 road resurfacing project. So, Representative of Morris Engineering will be here to open up the bids. Looked like we got about seven of them, I think, so get some good prices, hopefully.
Bid from McGill Construction. And the bid is total proposal in the amount of $700 and $7,887.20. Schroeder Asfalt, that's the next one. The total, the bid amount is $1,033,346 even. Bid is total proposal of $765,938.48. Wendell Brothers. K5. What was that again? And Gallagher Asfalt is the last one. All right, let's see if you read the first bid and the, and the second one again to see if I got these right. The first was McGill Construction and $707,878.20. Any other was a $1,083,000? $33,000. Yes, that's from Schroeder Asfalt. Okay.
Need a motion to move that to the roads of construction?
Second.
Moved by Alderman Clifford. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, hey, um, see, Hank Begley. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries. All right. City reports, the only thing I have, this Saturday is our spring e-waste program at the metro station from 7:30 until 11:30. So, if you've got any e-waste you need to get rid of, we do it four times a year, and this happens to be the springtime. So, that'll be at the metro station at 7:30, starting at 7:30 in the morning and running until 11:30. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report today.
All right. City treasurer?
Thank you. No report.
City attorney?
Uh, no report.
Any communications anyone have tonight? Citizens wishing to address the council? Name an address, please.
Scott Rusko, uh, city, resident of Palis Heights. I just want to make a quick levity comment. I love the, the proposals where it's like 40 cents or 90 cents or 25 cents, like it's gonna make that much of a difference. But, serious matter, I've been a, I've been a resident off and on for the better part of 53 years in, in Palis Heights. I am a practicing family physician whose office is located in Oak Forest, who admits a, a, a great, well, all of my patients, I admit, if it's under my jurisdiction, so to speak, to what's now known as Northwestern Palis Hospital. And right before the, the holiday weekend, I was informed by, by several other doctors who this can be taken with fairly reasonable accuracy, that this is not just a rumor, that this is actually going to be done. Northwestern is planning on instituting a policy that as of September 1st, none of the private family doctors and internal medicine specialists, or the primary care physicians, so to speak, are going to be allowed to see their patients in the hospital any longer. They are going to demand that anybody who is admitted to the hospital has to be admitted under a hospitalist who does not know the patient's history, the patient doesn't know them, the patients don't want to be seen by hospitalists if they can so choose, and, and this will have a trickle-down effect. And there are people in this room that I know, and this would violate HIPAA, cannot say, that see specialists that, that practice and do procedures and outpatient procedures, angiograms, surgeries at, at Northwestern Palis Hospital, that this trickle-down effect, that once September 1st occurs, it's not only going to happen just to the primary care physicians, it's going to happen to the specialists. Because once the hospitalists at, at Palis that are employed by Northwestern have control, they are going to only refer to other Northwestern-employed physicians, including the specialists, which will mean that eventually the specialist, the, the independent specialists that are not employed are going to be squeezed out as well. This was said by several sources, I know personally, that three years ago, when Northwestern took over, they had said in a meeting to a group of specialists that within five years, and this is three years ago, within five years, we intend to have, to have all our own people in this hospital. Now, obviously, this affects me. It doesn't affect me from, from an outpatient standpoint. I have a, a office. My patients will still come to me there. But if my hus, my husband, my patients have to be brought by ambulance to Palis Hospital and they are admitted, they will no longer be able to see me. Not my choice, their choice, hospital's choice. Patients don't like that, and I've already been talking in the last five days to my patients that are abhorred by this. This is going to affect the community, some of which are here already today. You are, I, I'm sure that because of proximity, you're going to be using Northwestern Hospital. You may or may not have a doctor that's on staff there, but, or specialists that are on staff there. You're no longer going to have the option of choice. This infringes upon patient choice. This is a, this is a bigger issue with, with corporate medicine in general that has been going on for years that I don't think is right. It, it affects the doctor-patient relationship. That's a story, that's a bigger story for another day. But, but this is going to affect the community. I'm not, I, I am not a real estate specialist. I'm not a specialist on the economy by any means. But there are doctors literally right across the street, along College Drive, that have practices, that they might be a specialist, they might be primary care, that would, would be on staff at Palis, that are in private practice, that if they are not allowed to see any of their patients or have any patients that they can consult, do surgeries on, do catheterizations of the heart, do breast biopsies, you name it, what would be the reason for them to stay in this community with their, with their offices if the hospital that's closest to them and that they have been using no longer allows them to go there? I've already talked to several doctors, and they said if that happens, they're gonna move their office. It doesn't make sense to say here. Now, again, I don't know how that affects the tax base. I'm not a, a tax lawyer. I don't understand all this. But can you imagine if, if, if a number of buildings that are in Palis Heights don't have tenants that are physicians, how that could affect the community as a whole? I don't know the economic impact, but I can imagine it could be, it could be great. There's nothing really legally that I understand that the city council or anybody can do. Northwestern has already done this downtown 15 years ago. They've done it at some of their other, for instance, like Delnor Hospital as recently as three to five years ago. And corporate medicine is doing this in general. You can't really stop them from a legal standpoint. That's not even what I'm asking of citizens. That's not what I'm asking of the city council or the mayor. But this is something I think that this information needs to be disseminated. I'm already asking my patients to write letters to the CEO of Northwestern Palis expressing their displeasure that this infringes on their choice of who they want to see as doctors. I think the community needs to know about this. I'm going to go to local papers, the South Town Economist, Palis Regional. I would, I would ask, respectively, if I could ask that the, that City of Palis newsletter that I read myself every time it comes out, put this out there. So, so this community quickly, because we got five months before this is instituted. If we can't change their mind and get them to go back, they're not gonna listen to us, doctors. They don't care. We don't matter in their whole scheme of things. They can replace us just like a cog in, in, in any equipment. But if you have the public stating their resentment to this and saying such things as, I'm not putting words in people's mouths, that would say that's like, we don't agree with this. The only reason we go to Palis is because our doctors take care of us at Palis. If my doctor, who is not allowed to see me anymore, what's the reason I would want to even go to Palis to get my care or any of my tests? I'm gonna go where my doctor says, to get these tests, and we're not gonna send it to Palis anymore. And I'm not starting now, and that's me. But, but again, I think this does affect us all as a whole. There's a trickle-down effect. There's a ripple effect that's going to occur, and, and I think we need to get the citizens aware of this, because I think a lot of them are not going to like this move. I'm not saying if this is a fight that anybody wants to take on, we are already going to take it. They're not gonna listen to us. I don't know if they'll listen to, to anybody else. We are going to have a website that discusses this as well, and eventually we'll be able to direct the public of the website to go to this and, and say what we think should be done. We're getting a public relations person that is going to instruct us of how to get this out to the media and maybe even into places like WLS, WBPM, WGN radio. Possibly, I don't know if the, the actual local news stations will take this on. They may not, but, but maybe they would put this out there. Because the only way we have a chance of overturning this decision and making them fall back and say, okay, we're not gonna do it after all, is, is the strength and power, monetary power of how it might impact them financially and, and as a, a black eye, if, so to speak. So, I, I don't know that I, I mean, I can answer any of your questions. As I know it, they haven't even given us the courtesy of putting this out in a memorandum to us to let us know about this. They, they did this at, at an executive meeting, at the very end of the meeting, right before Good Friday, so as to have a holiday weekend. In my opinion, I'm not slandering them, I'm just, my, my gut feeling, this is my personal feeling, they did this on purpose to not allow, or, or going into a holiday weekend, they would disrupt, disrupt this. They have not even said anything to us yet. It's, it's being done in secret, but people I know that attended the meeting told me about this. It was verified by three other doctors, and this is not just a rumor. This is their plan. So.
Okay.
I have a meeting Thursday with
With Nick.
Nick, another doctor about this thing.
Yes.
And I think it's probably prudent for us maybe to wait till they make your official communication to you.
Right, and I have no idea when that's gonna occur.
I agree.
They, they could be doing this surreptitiously and not even give us the benefit of, of some kind of
Sure, I understand.
Letter until a month before they do it.
Understand, yeah.
Now, you said they go into the hospital, say it's one of your patients. Not necessarily will you be allowed to help them in the
No, I will not.
Okay.
If this goes through as a September 1st.
Okay, now, my second part of the question, okay. Are any of the other major hospitals do this similarly, if you know?
I can tell you that
Like University of Chicago, Loyola, big-name hospitals like that?
Well, I can tell you that I know that, that Christ Hospital and Little Company Mary tried this six, give or take, years ago, and they were trying to do the exact same thing. And what happened is, as I understand it, because there were some doctors that, that are now retired, that used to be in the advocate system, then moved to Palis, then moved out to Silver Cross and subsequently retired, because of, and they moved to Palis especially because of this. But they had their finger on the pulse, and they said that it was public outcry, and the patients demanding that they get to see their own doctor, that that lasted about a year and a half, and then they reversed course. But even if this goes into effect for a year and a half,
Yeah.
I have to have a place where I can admit my patients and see them. I would move everything to Silver Cross in New Lennox, because I couldn't, I, I can't in good conscience. I mean, it monetarily affects me a little bit, but I care very deeply about my patients. A lot of family doctors and internal medicine specialists have given up their practice because they just are fed up with the policies of these corporate giants to begin with. But there are a handful of us who still want to see our patients, and our patients literally ask us. They literally come to us because I'm affiliated with, with, we're not affiliated in, in mission sets, not employee sets. They specifically seek me out because I'm on staff at Palis, and that's where they want to go. And a couple today, when I, new patients I saw today were just like, I can't believe this. I sought you out because you're on staff there. Now, I don't know what I'm gonna do. And, and so, I mean, this, it goes both ways. Can I survive, can I personally, as a doctor, survive this? Of course I can, because I'll just move to Silver Cross. I'm in it more for the patients. I care deeply about my patients. I've been in practice for almost 34 years now, and, and I, I'd lay down on a train track for my patients. And I just don't think this is, this is good business. It does happen throughout the country. A lot of corporate giants are making this decision. Northwestern has that with a couple of their other affiliations. So, it's not unprecedented, but this started, Palis Hospital started with Dr. Roki and Dr. Blakeman, who wanted a community hospital. And it was for a number of years. And it was a great place for all of us to go and not have to go to any big hospital. It's just, to me, it's just, it's heartbreaking to see this happen.
Well, I'm, I'm, I thank you because I'm, I'm one of these type of people that started at St. Bernard's, went to St. George's, and then came out here.
I know them very well, absolutely.
I know them all very well.
Yes.
Hi, Doc. He's the Fourth Ward resident and a good guy. Thanks for bringing this to our attention, and I have a couple things that I think as residents and also elected people up here we should look into is just, I've already talked to other doctors that have already been aware of this previously, and they said, it's pretty much what you just said. They've already been moving their patients to Silver Cross, which means they're not going to the hospital. That's number one. And, but also, too, it takes people that aren't, like, using the beds over there. So, they are the biggest employer in Palis Heights, by the way. And so, you know, I'm just hoping that at some point, you know, they don't upset enough people where all of a sudden they get empty beds because they'll reduce the staff. And then, the other thing is, I thought maybe what we could do is to have, like Kent Bussie, maybe look into how many office, doctors' offices and stuff that we have as tenants within the city to see, like, what the potential, if, because some of the other doctors that I'm familiar with, and a lot of them live in the Fourth Ward, have talked to me about some of this stuff.
There's five in our subdivision alone.
Yeah, right, five guys. I mean, and they were saying that to be closer to the hospital, like, the reason that they're, they all moved to, like, Misty Meadows or over to, and, you know, Westgate, is because it's an easy drive over to the hospital. And they said, essentially, we want to be close to our hospital, because a lot of times you have to jump out of bed and get over there. I said, we'll probably have to move.
Yeah.
And so, it could have an impact on, as he pointed out, in a real estate.
Real estate, real estate prices could go down as a result, too.
Be of some. Might have nurses, too. Anyhow, that's all I have to say.
I don't know if you see the news tonight. It's funny, you mentioning all of this, but on World News Tonight, Channel 7, there's a physician on there talking about hospitals and profit, increasing their profit margins. And if you go and look back on that or somehow get hold of it and read it, it's pretty much, there's a lot of stuff in there. You were just saying that he's mad about and testified about it, at Congress about it,
Yeah.
what's going on, that it's a way for them to increase their profitability versus care.
A lot of these hospitals were supposed to be non-for-profit to begin with,
Yeah.
and it's become a huge business. They claim they're losing money hand over fist, and that's one of the reasons they're doing this. I don't necessarily buy that, but I can't say for sure.
I don't think anybody buys that when you know.
But, yeah, they, I, I was told in a family practice meeting that they're losing, like, $7 billion a month or something like that. I could be misquoting, and that, don't quote me. I, I don't even remember what, what it was.
But that article is very interesting.
But this, it's, it's, that's another story. That's a topic for where is medicine going? That's not for this forum, but, but, yeah.
Is it, I, I heard some, I get this, I think we all do, there's these little sites, like the Palis Patch, and this, there's another one, like New Something. And I've been reading, is this true? I've been over there, thank God, lately, that, like, the emergency room takes forever or something. I, I, some people are saying it takes, like, 12 hours to get
That is correct.
seen. I mean, is, is that true?
Yes, and I, I can say that that's, that's not, that is, that's, that's a symptom of a much larger problem, though. Then, and that's not unique to Palis. I mean, if you look at any other emergency room right now, their wait times and how, how many people are waiting in there. At the height of COVID, when the beds were completely filled, they're literally, people could be in a holding bed down in the emergency room for 24 hours to 36 hours before they actually made it up to the floor. I'm not going to pull, to, to blame this on Northwestern. A lot of it has to do with, with the fiscal aspect of medicine, insurance, Medicaid, and all that type of stuff, that a lot of people use the emergency room as their private, as their
Primary care.
primary care site. Because Illinois is terrible in its reimbursement for Medicaid patients. You're lucky if you get paid within two years, and it's a fraction of what you actually billed. So, a lot of people are forced to use the emergency room for primary care. So, that's systemic of a, of a whole bigger problem, not unique to Northwestern. And I'm not gonna slander them by saying it's their fault.
Right, I was just curious if that was
But it's true. I walk, any day I walk in there, there are people in carts, there, there are people that are waiting eight hours in the, in the lobby. But that's just a, if, you can't turn anybody away, and if anybody comes there, they're gonna have to be seen. But as humans, the, the nurses and the doctors can only get them through as quickly as they can. But that's not a Northwestern problem.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Right, well, thanks, Doc. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much. And any other citizens? All right. If not, Finance, Alderman McGrogan.
Okay, so there's nothing on the agenda that was handed out. I just wanted to mention a couple things. Number one, the finance meeting for next Tuesday, April 9th, will be canceled unless there's an emergency situation. And then, just as an FYI, the, in finance, we're currently reviewing a compensation report for staff that we all are kind of familiar with. And we're also reviewing an incentive plan to help the current owners of Tiffany Square. And that's the end of my report.
Public safety, Alderman Bassow?
I have no report this evening. Thank you.
All right, sir. Alderman Alderman Begley, Brownson Property?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I have a motion to approve the renewal contract with Cintas uniforms for the public works mechanics.
Moved by Alderman Begley, sir, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Clifford, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Motion, uh, the next, I have a motion to approve the purchase of new tables and chairs for the conference room in City Hall from Lowery McDonald Company in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yeah.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I have a motion to approve payment to Thermopall Mechanical Incorporated for the installation of a ductless HVAC system in the City Hall conference room in the amount of seventy-two hundred dollars.
Moved by Alderman Begley, sir, second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Mc- Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes. Next, I have a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing local appropriations for construction and construction engineering for the Cal-SAG Trail Link slash Trailhead Parking Improvement at Lake Catherine.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
And finally, I have a motion to approve payment for professional engineering services to Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the Cal-SAG Trail at Lake Catherine Phase Two Project in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-one cents.
Moved by Alderman Begley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Thank you. That's the end of my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Alderman McGovern?
Uh, Mayor, I have no report. I just want to, uh, remind some of the members of the committee that tomorrow night, we have a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Six-thirty.
Recreation, Alderman Key?
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Roads and construction, Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve, uh, a drainage easement at one twenty-nine hundred seventieth court for the insulation of, uh, stormwater infrastructure.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bassel, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So you know what that is, uh, through the cul-de-sac over in that area, and the turnaround is gonna be redone, extensive digging, road upheaval and drainage. If you're driving down Route eighty-three by the water tower, you might see a big pile of blue pipe down there. Big pile of it, and we're moving that today, and that's all part of the, the drainage, uh, project over on Seventieth Court. So, um, and next, a motion to adopt the resolution allowing the mayor or his appointee to execute a salt, a state salt purchase agreement.
Moved by Alderman Clifford, second by Alderman McGovern, McGrogan, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. License, permits, and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda this evening. However, uh, I will be canceling the meeting for next Tuesday, April ninth as well. I will be out of town.
Great. Thank you, sir. Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move to approve payment number two to Performance Pipeline Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-three sewer rehabilitation program in the amount of thirty-four thousand six hundred ten dollars and forty cents.
Second. Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
I move to approve the installation of controls and SCA TA at the Menominee, Menominee Lift Station with Metropolitan Industries in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second. Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
I move to approve the replacement of the roof at the Eightieth Avenue Pump Station with Garland slash DBS Incorporated in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second. Moved by Alderman Violet, and second by Alderman Key, discussion?
Question, uh, was this project, since it's not a, was this put out to bid for the roof?
No.
Did anybody bid on this, a different contractor to do the bid?
No. It needs to be done.
Well, a lot of things need to be done, but don't those things have to be on bid? When it exceeds so much, seventy-five thousand dollars, one guy's getting it. I'm just asking this.
No, we didn't put it out to bid.
It is a specialized roof, maybe.
This is, it, this is actually, this is an estimate right now. That's why it's an amount not to exceed. We haven't actually let this job out. This is just, this is just, uh, the, uh, the director's estimate. And we're approving this expense at this time because the work needs to be done. So when, when we have, when we actually hire someone to do the work, we'll go through the bid process or whatever comes next.
Okay.
All right. Roll call?
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
I move to request bids for the Cypress Avenue Water Main Replacement Project.
Moved by Alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Key, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve payment to Aries Incorporated for the eight-inch sewer main repair at a hundred, hundred thirty-fourty-two South Seventieth Court in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
Second. Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes. I move to approve payment for professional engineering services with Air JN Group for the twenty-twenty-three sewer rehabilitation design and construction and on-call underground infrastructure services rendering through March first, twenty-twenty-four, in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred four dollars and twenty cents.
Second. Moved by Alderman Key, sec- I mean, Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
I move to approve payment for professional engineering services with Strand Associates Incorporated for the Hundred Thirty-first Street Water Main CIPP lining rendering through February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and seven cents.
Second. Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, any discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
I move to approve payment for professional engineering services with Morris Engineering Incorporated for the Cypress Water Main Replacement and the Illinois eighty-three and Navajo Creek Projects in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty cents.
Second. Moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
I move to approve a proposal and contract with Seco Consultants Incorporated to subsurface exploration, laboratory testing, geotechnical engineering and analysis for the hospital tank in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Second. Moved by Alderman Key, second by Ald- moved by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Key, discussion? Roll call?
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
That's it, huh?
That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Business and account development, Alderman Key?
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
How about cable TV, Alderman McGovern?
No report, Mayor.
All right. Anybody have any old business? Citizens wishing to ask any questions?
Can I put your question? This is just, uh, on my curiosity. If you look at Water and Sewer seventeen and twenty-one, one is a motion to request bids for Cypress Water Main Replacement, and twenty-one is to approve a payment for, it seems the same thing. Are these different issues?
One's for the engineering and one's for the bid for the-
Okay, that's what I thought. Interesting.
Okay. Any other, any other new business? Citizens wishing to ask questions, however, anyone who already asked. Entertainer motion to adjourn. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?